Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm Kate Kite, the Continuing Education Coordinator for Illinois Heartland Library System. Thank you for joining us for this IHLS Members Matter Special Meeting. Before I turn it over to Colleen and our guests, I do want to just go over a couple housekeeping items. Please make sure you are muted until you are asked to unmute and stop any video. And then we are going to be using on your Zoom screen down at the bottom, you should see an option for Q and A. The chat is enabled, so you can use chat. However, any questions that you have to ensure that I see them and Colleen sees them, please use the Q and A function. So those are pretty much my only housekeeping items, Colleen, and I'm going to go ahead and mute and stop my own video and turn it over to you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Kate. Okay, well, I'm Colleen Dettin Meyer, the Delivery and Facilities Director at Illinois Heartland Library System. And today we are joined by two special guests, Lynn Price and Devon Hall from Marigold Library System. And we'll introduce them here in just a minute to kind of go over some questions that were submitted from our members. And then open up the floor as well to for any questions that members submit via that Q and A function on Zoom. Okay, what will we cover today? First, I'm going to do a live video demonstration, or not live, sorry, video demonstration of sorted methods, comparing the two automated versus hand sorting that we currently do. And then we'll jump into that live Q and A with Marigold Library System staff. And then after they leave, we'll do, I'll do some housekeeping items such as the project timeline update, some member connection publication reminders, and then review any of the known issues with our duplication project and a tip from IHLS staff. And then we'll open it up to live Q and A for me with IHLS questions regarding the Automated Material Handling System project. Okay, we, our marketing communication staff developed this quick video to just kind of show the difference between automated sorting and hand sorting. So let's take a look. Okay. And then let's jump in now to the live Q and A with Lynn Price and Devon Hall. Thank you very much for joining us this morning. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Do you want to introduce yourself then, Lynn and Devon?
Yeah, I'm Lynn Price. I'm the CEO for Marigold Library System and we're located in Stockmore, Alberta.
And Devon Hall, I work in shipping and receiving at Marigold.
Great, thank you. Absolutely. It's, it's great to be able to hear from someone who's actually had practical experience with this system. Since this is a new project for us, of course, it's always good to have somebody to lean on and talk to about things as, as things come up. So. Okay, I'm going to go and jump into the questions that were submitted. Question one, how can I send items through delivery without rubber bands in a manner that we will not break or lose the discs?
So specifically, I just have a clarification question. I assume that you were talking about CDs and audio cases specifically.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we have never used rubber bands in our delivery system, although in our consortia, we have had other libraries send items to us with, with rubber bands and we eliminated them altogether a few years ago across our consortia, which is just over 185 libraries across the province. Because there were also allergic reactions to rubber bands. So we actually haven't used them for quite some time. And did you want to talk about your experience with that, Devon?
Oh, sure. Honestly, I've found sending things without the rubber bands through the system, there isn't really much difference than just hand sorting. Like when they fall into a bin, they don't crash open or anything. Usually if there are any issues, it's already a damaged item that to begin with, which then you wouldn't want to send that through the sorter anyway, so.
Okay, great. And then how many audio visual items have been broken when you're using that sorting machine?
Generally speaking, we were talking about this and we, we don't think that there have, we actually don't really have a record of anything happening on the sorting machine related to any AV being broken during the induction or falling into the bin. The only time we have had damage to the AV items is when it's out in the van delivery. But even that is less than 1% of any interlibrary loan, and that's over the course of a year. We did do a study that demonstrated it was more a perception of, of damage than actual damage. And our libraries reported that more items get broken in the return bins at the libraries than have ever been damaged in your library loan.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. Okay, and then last one, have you had any items that have gotten stuck in the sorting machine where it damages the item, such as when it's going down that conveyor belt? Has any things gotten kind of sucked into the machine as it's going down those conveyor belt?
There have been a few items, but again, the percentages are so low that it's not a regular occurrence at all. Usually it would be if someone's feeding it into the machine wrong, like we usually try and orient the spines in a certain direction so that it reduces any issues. But I've, I've had occasionally the, maybe a very old book or one that's already got some tearing or something. And if it's put in the wrong way, then sometimes it'll catch, but again, it's very rare.
Okay, yeah, actually, the, during training, the Lingso technician did teach us that we should be orienting the spines in a certain way, specifically for, they are talking about print, but it actually is the same for AV as well. Because when the case falls in, then the part that would be most likely to pop open stays shut because there's no impact. It's, it's hitting the side that is closed. So whether you're on one side of the machine, this, the spine or the, the solid piece of case would be on this side. And then when you're on the other side of the machine coming this way, it's still on here. So you're orienting differently when you're inducting. And, and generating, I was going to say, I'm not sure if you do in transit slips or not, but those are more likely to get stuck in the machine than the material.
Okay, great. In general, Kate, are there any questions that have been submitted? I should have gave a heads up to that for member libraries. If you have questions that are coming up in your head as this presentation is going on, please feel free to go ahead and submit them. We have set aside this time right now for Marigold, live questions with the Marigold Library System staff. So if you have any at all, please go ahead and submit those. And if not, I thought it might be helpful that maybe Lynn or Devon, if you just want to give us some general tips or information or things you've noticed with the machine, and even too from like the member library perspective, how things went with you with your implementation of this.
Yeah, sounds good. Are there any questions?
None have been submitted through the Q and A. And there was a comment that about disc type items that are in a case that can allow the disc to come out. And that was the only comment in the chat.
I think maybe what they're referring to there is if it's a type of a disc case perhaps that mean that the disc can fall right out, and I think that's what they might be referring to.
So more like a, like a sleeve almost for CDs or something like that.
And I, I will jump in there and say, we did have a member library, and I should have thought to add that to this set of slides here, but they came up with an idea with the receipt paper that we currently use, the sticky receipt paper, and how that could be used to kind of secure closed the case. And I'll have to find that picture. I took a picture when she came by our office to show me. And I should have remembered to include that. So I'll have to make sure I send that out to the member libraries because that it, her idea was a really good idea for keeping things closed if you are concerned about it popping open without having to use rubber bands.
I could see that working. The other thing is the, the sorter has a couple of endpoints that are, we actually, we have them ending into a trolley that can be taken to our interlibrary loan clerk. And so if you have something that comes in in a bin that's, because we have kits or we have an, you know, maybe an oversized item, something that wouldn't really, you know, a really heavy print material, or maybe something that's very awkward like that, and you don't think it would go through the machine. You don't have to put it through the machine, but you still need to, it, it still needs to be checked in at your sorting at your facility so that you know where it's going, but it, those things could be pulled out and hand sorted. So it would depend how many you're talking about. Is it a significant part of your interlibrary loan? And if so, there might be a way for the programming on the machine to sort them into their own in, into, into a different bin if you wanted to try to hand sort them.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I don't recall if you can actually have yellow slips printed based on a material type. But there's a lot of functionality with the Lingso system that might allow you to do that, in which case they could be separated out and then into their own, into their own bin so that there won't be a print item falling on it, and then you could hand sort it into a separate, into independently into the locations that they need to go, the destinations they need to go.
Okay.
We were impressed at the amount of specificity you could get in the Lingso system in terms of how it could program the destinations.
That's something I'll make note for whenever we begin the backend kind of setup on that kind of stuff. We'll look into those.
Yeah, and we actually don't use, we don't use bubble wrap or other packing material at all, and we do send items around the province. And again, it's a pretty low percentage, and even talking to some of the other shipping and receiving clerks, and when they say there's a few, I mean, it's like a handful a year. It's, it's not, we're not talking, you know, like five a day or 10 a day. And we do about 2 million items a year, which I know that Illinois Heartland is a bigger population clearly than we do, so you probably do more volume than that, but if that gives you some perspective.
Yeah, that's good to hear.
And just from a logistical sense, we've learned that we can help out our member libraries by making something easier. For example, we were able to eliminate yellow slips entirely. The library staff do not have to use them at all. We do have to apply them for the items that we send outside of our own consortia. But that's not a, that's not a problem because you can actually set that by, set that by branch, including sort of an other, like an unidentified branch. And we also don't need the library staff. I don't know if you did this in the past, but when we had large libraries sending to other large libraries, they would set up their interlibrary loan stations so that they could sort a full bin for one library and then another full library and then have mixed bins for the smaller ones. And now it's just easier for the library staff because they can put everything into mixed bins. It's just as fast for us.
That's good to hear. Kate, were you going to say you, there was a question in there?
Yeah, we've actually gotten a few questions here. I believe you answered half of this one. How many items does your library system sort per day and per year? You said you do 2 million items per year?
So I'd say 2 million items through interlibrary loan. So technically, it's 4 million a year through the machine because they are going back and forth.
Right. And have the AMH sorters allowed for a more efficient movement of materials, which would result in materials being moved to more libraries more quickly?
Oh, yes.
Definitely.
We, as soon as we went through the process of adopting the sorter and ruling everything out and getting, getting ourselves used to the way that the workflow moves, it's, you can see it in the CIRC stats for, for interlibrary loan.
And then if, if the disc item was placed in something like a mailing envelope, would it go through the sorting machine?
Yep, we can send, well, if it's in a little cardboard package, if it's in a mailing slip, as long as the barcode is successful to scan, then it'll go through quite easily. If you have to take it out of a whole bunch of packaging to scan the barcode and then repackage it, that's probably not going to work as well.
Right, and I'm not sure if they use, if you use RFID, then it wouldn't be an issue perhaps.
Right, and I, I'll jump in there too. I did reach out to Lingso staff about a question like that because I know some libraries were wanting to perhaps protect their items. What Lingso had suggested was a clear envelope for those types of items that they might be concerned about the pages or it's a very fragile item. So they suggested just like a clear envelope for those. But they did say overall, most items would not require that.
And then we had a question that has a couple pictures, so it got sent through chat. If you can see those that, these are images are audiobook cases that are used at my library. They have a binder look. Do these style binders travel through AMHS?
The top one, yes, but I don't think I've seen the bottom one.
No, I don't see very many of those, but just looking at the design it. Again, as long as you're able to scan it, it should, should go through if it's properly oriented.
Yeah, the, the sorter has, what moves it along, it almost looks like what, what's, what's moving is actually a bit of a rolling rubbery finish, so it will, it will grab a material like we're seeing in that example of the, the black case. It wouldn't be a problem from the material. Again, it would just have to be if it could, if it is a barcode, if it would be on the outside or RFID where it's located.
And I would jump in here that this might be a good example for that with the member library had suggested. Can you see my Q and A then on my screen? I didn't know if when I pulled that up, everyone could see it or only it's just on my end.
Oh, we can't see it, but if you could just read it out, that would be great.
I think if I can move this, my mouse, of course, is orientated differently. Well, I'll, I'll send out that picture after this meeting to all the member libraries, so then they can see as well what I was talking about here.
The other thing that was helpful for the library staff is, I'm not sure if this happens now, but we do not separate print and AV in the bins. So when they're mixed, not only are they mixed for the various libraries that they're going to, but all the material can be mixed together. Because no matter what, it all has to go through the sorter anyway. And then when we're organizing in the back, before you close up the bin, anything that's audio visual is moved to the top, and that's just to protect it when it's being placed, you know, down in a van delivery or being moved from place to place. So print material ends up on the bottom.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, those are all the questions that have come through at this time.
Okay. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that might be helpful for member libraries to hear. And just out, I guess, my own curiosity, do you have one main sorting machine then, or do you have multiple hubs as well with multiple sorting machines?
There are other systems that have sorters, but in our library system, we are the only one so with a sorter at our headquarters. And our 37 member library sites do not have a sorter.
Okay, that makes sense. And then all of them, your courier goes and picks up all their items and then brings it back to your headquarters to sort.
Correct.
Okay.
It has been really helpful for the libraries in terms of staff time because of the way that we can pack the reduction in using interlibrary loan slips. Because they have to be run through the machine at headquarters anyway. And if you need a slip, it could be generated there, like I said, depending on the branch that it's going to. So it saved them time, it saved them some, some costs in thermal paper and some other nice surprises that we didn't really anticipate when we, when we launched it. And space, which we know at small libraries is pretty key.
Absolutely. Okay, well, I guess if anybody else thinks of questions, please feel free to reach out to me. I've got Lynn's contact information then now. So I know I can reach out to her if I, if we have questions about things.
Absolutely. We're very happy to answer to the best of our ability and thank you for having us today.
Yeah, thank you for joining us. I really do appreciate it.
Absolutely. Take care.
All right, thanks. Bye bye. Okay, well, I'm going to jump into project timeline updates then. As far as the project status overall, the project has been progressing as we planned. And there have been no changes to the timeline that we initially rolled out. As far as for the delivery, or I'll wait and jump into that in just a minute. As we submitted previously, the project key dates, I just wanted to kind of go over that chair members should go ahead and start placing your barcodes externally for all new materials. I think everyone is aware of that part right now, but I just kind of wanted to go over that just in case. And then as far as intergovernmental agreements, we've heard back from almost all of our member libraries. I believe we're still waiting to hear from 21 libraries about their status and what option they would like to proceed with, with, with their IGA. But we've got the group purchase discount details out. We've began that barcode duplication process at our hubs. And we're also doing that barcode duplicator kits. We just started receiving back all the duplicator kits from round one libraries. And then we're getting ready to prepare to send them out for round two for the 30-day loan periods. And I think I have this in the slide later, but I'll go ahead and just say it now. Just as a reminder, with the libraries who are borrowing those duplicator kits, you can get back in line and borrow those as many times as you need. It's not just a 30-day and done period. We do have, we did kind of set it up so that there would be enough duplicator kits so that if you borrow it one time and then you did get back in line again, you're welcome to do that. Okay, so late winter, whoops. I just realized this isn't, I guess, late winter would be in February. I was gonna say, is that a typo in there? But so we're still anticipating the first machine to be installed at the Edwardsville hub. And I would say more so now, it's probably going to be spring 2025. We've just finalized all the agreements with Lingso and turned over that signed contract. So I still need to meet with their project planning team to get all the details finalized. But we do still hopefully anticipate late spring 2025, we'll have that installed. And then once we've kind of had the machine installed and implemented and have noticed whether or not what we like or don't like, we'll go ahead and order those champagne and then the Carbondale hub machines and have those installed. And then we're anticipating by late summer or fall 2025, and I would anticipate it's probably going to be fall 2025 that we're hoping at that time we'll have the majority of the barcodes for transit that should be moved externally at that time. And then, once we do have all three machines installed, the IHLS staff will go ahead and turn off that delivery transit receipt paper printing functionality so that we'll just begin sorting everything by the machines. And that is how we'll, the external barcodes is how we'll know where the item is being sorted to or RFID. As far as for future communications with this project, please make sure that you have marked any of your staff who are involved in this whole delivery process as a system delivery contact in the library directory and learning calendar, also known as L2. That is our method that we can email out to member libraries based on routes. So ensuring that that system delivery contact is marked is very helpful because that's our best way of reaching you in the event of an emergency. And then as well, the IHLS member connection newsletter, if you're signed up for that, there has been a dedicated AMHS section near the bottom. And we'll continue to provide all of our updates regarding this project there, as well as on that AMHS website on the IHLS page. Next, I wanted to review a couple of the member connection publications that I have put out in the last couple of months, in case you do not receive that newsletter or you missed them. So for option one libraries, if your library has elected to have IHLS duplicate barcodes as they pass through the hub, we did begin that barcode duplication on September 9th. And we will only duplicate your barcode if you have chosen option one and you do not have external barcodes already on your items. For option two libraries, we did send out that first round of duplicator kits on August 28th and 29th. So if you're next in line for the duplicators, you can expect your units to arrive around October 1st. I think maybe one or two libraries have already received theirs. But the rest of them, we're waiting on the custom coding from BaseScan to be able to install those. We're hoping to maybe do that this afternoon and get them shipped out for tomorrow. IHLS will be providing that number of free supplies as the unique items that were circulated through delivery in 2023. So those supplies were either already set or will be sent here in the next few days, once you have completed your IGA. And then just make sure that you will need to reserve your kit in Polaris. That's not something we will do on our end because we don't know how many duplicator kits you might want. And when you are ready to receive them, so please check that out in Polaris. And all this information was sent, if you're an option two library, back to the person who responded to the IGA whenever you completed that. So if you have any questions or need a copy of this email, please go ahead and reach out to me. And then if you do need more supplies because you want to duplicate your entire collection instead of just items that go through the transit, you can order those through BaseScan. There's a group purchase section on our website. And it has now been updated to include online links. So if you want to order via credit card or on the BaseScan website, there, there are codes, discount codes for that, so you can get everything ordered that way. Here is that group purchase details sheet that you're familiar maybe with seeing. If you click these live links up here, that's a link right here to the BaseScan website. And then you can add those thermal transfer barcode labels to your, to your cart. And then you'll need to enter this discount code IHLS labels to be able to receive that discount. And then same here with the Reserip, and that's a live link to their website. And then you'll enter that discount to get that special pricing here. The duplicator kits themselves, if you're wanting to purchase a duplicator, those do need to be ordered through email from Jenny because they do not have this specific model on their website. And then as far as branch level sorting, this is a big update that we haven't provided at a special meeting that we've had here. We met with the vendors in July, and after that visit, we decided that the most effective solution for these branch level sorting in the transit slips would be that IHLS staff are going to apply the transit slips at our hubs for the branch level libraries only. So this would be the way that all materials at the branches could be easily sorted at that member library level. And then the member libraries would still see the savings on that transit paper cost and IHLS would incur those costs instead. So that's going to be the way we're going to plan to sort branch levels sorting. Next, I wanted to review some of the known issues that we've been having with this duplication project as items are coming through our hub. So we have noticed that some staff have been accidentally applying barcodes. So what we think has been happening is that the IHLS staff had accidentally had the incorrect interpretation on that training materials that we provided to them of where they should be looking to provide the barcode or to determine if the library wanted duplication completed or not. We think that they were looking at the top of the label where the item was heading instead of at the bottom where it shows the owning library assigned branch. So we have kind of gone over all that in detail again with all the staff who are working on this project. But there are 45 staff who are helping with this. So I've gone over it individually and we've done a live demonstration as well. And then we have an internal Intranet that I've been providing updates on as far as this project. And if you are a member library who has not authorized IHLS to do this, but then you do get an item that has been duplicated, please reach out to me because I've been trying to kind of keep a sheet of which hubs it's going through and then which date it might have gone through that hub. So I can identify if it's a specific staff member who's been doing this, or maybe we can get to the bottom of what, why that's occurring. And then this is a newer item that we've noticed is that some scanners at the member libraries are not set up to read code 39. So these duplicate barcodes that we've been applying are written in a code 39 format. And so when the, a new, another member library gets that duplicated barcode and they go to scan it, their scanner just doesn't do anything. And that's likely because it's not set up properly to read that code 39. In the member connection newsletter that's going out later today, I do have an article published about this code 39 and how to test to see if your barcodes are not set up correctly to read that. And a lot of times it's a fairly simple fix where it's an install to be able to read code 39. So our IT staff are willing to help with that, as well as obviously if you're a Laserware member or anything like that, Laserware can help you with this solution. But that is a known error that we're having with some member libraries with code 39. Oh, I should mention, going back to this, the ones that we have been reported, I do believe have all been 2D scanners. So it might be mostly focused with the 2D scanners, but there also could be some other older scanners that maybe just weren't ever, they didn't have that coding capability set up with that code 39. And then when we loaned out that first batch of duplicator kits, we went ahead and included all the original owner's manuals with that because we thought it might be helpful if staff wanted those additional details. Unfortunately though, those owner's manuals Unfortunately though, those owner's manuals contained instructions for completing a calibration or a factory reset. So then as member libraries were setting up their machines, they went ahead and did that calibration or the factory reset. But those should not, um, be done at all. Dave at BaseScan, whenever he programmed all these machines, he programmed everything so that it was completely ready to go. All we needed to do was just install the supplies and use those. Um, but I wanted to go ahead and mention this in case, for some reason, you got a duplicator kit that didn't pass through the hub properly, and we didn't get a chance to remove all those owner's manuals. Please don't you, please don't follow the original owner's manuals, follow the instructions that the IHLs staff have generated for the setup of these machines. So, and then the only steps that would be required for this duplication is to just install the supplies. And then I just wanted to remind everybody that, um, the paper core for the resin ribbon will need, you'll need an empty paper core at all times. So how this will work is we'll send in addition, uh, paper core, a blank one whenever you get your kit. And then whenever your resin ribbon runs out, um, it, it's kind of like a two-step process where this is the empty one and it's back here. And then up here, which is not pictured, is the full resin ribbon. So as you duplicate items, it will continue to just feed more and more into the top. And so you'll get to a point where the bottom one is empty and the top one is full. So you can just throw away the top one and then keep that empty one at the bottom. So at all times, you'll need an empty one to restart that next resin ribbon. And then if you're a member library who's not yet done with your duplication and it's time to send your, um, printers back, you can keep your supplies. We do have some extra empty paper cores. So if there's nothing in there in the kit, we'll go ahead and add another empty paper core in there. And we may just need to order a couple extra empties from BaseScan so that we do have enough. Because I think some member libraries have not been able to get through all of their items in that thirty days. Um, and then you can keep, you can keep both the top and the bottom, I guess, is what I'm saying here. You don't have to return an empty one if you're not yet finished with your supplies. Go ahead and keep the top and the bottom, and then we'll provide an empty paper core for the next library. Um, and then just an overall general progress report I wanted to mention is that as of last week, we've duplicated eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-five items at our hubs. And I did hear from one of the member libraries that I think she was able to get through about twenty-two thousand items in her month of having the duplicator kit, kit. Whoops, I messed up that slide. Uh, this was for the tips for IHLs staff. And how do, oh, this was, I'm sorry, this was a tip from an IHLs, uh, member library. How do your staffer volunteer inspect the items? So I asked member libraries who ha, already have outside barcodes, how does that process now work for you? When, without having outside or inside barcodes that require the staffer volunteers to inspect those items. So what some member libraries reported was that they just open the item and do a visual check. And then that they require staff to open each item and visually inspect that all discs are accounted for, and that there's no visible damages to the items. Um, next, I'm going to review tips from IHLs staff, and I really only just have one here. And that's just a reminder to try to refrain from place, placing that transit label over the top left corner. If you can try to kind of keep it more towards the bottom or the right-hand section, so that when we're applying those, uh, barcodes, it's easier to just put it there on that top left corner. And we don't have to move the transit label to do it. Um, obviously, there's lots of items that are small, and that's not an option. So you're going to have to put it there in the middle, and it's going to cover up that section. But if it is possible to try to keep it lower, that would be very helpful. Okay, live question and answer, Kate, what kind of questions do we have here in the chat?
Okay, we have one that asked, when should we put transit slips on? And Laura, if you want to unmute yourself and, uh, if you can be a little bit more specific.
I think you pretty much answered my question. I was trying to figure out when, when we should stop doing it, and you, you answered that when you were giving me the timeline, so we're gonna constantly put them on until you tell us different.
Correct. And actually, I think if I'm understanding it correctly from the IT staff, whenever they shut off that receipt paper functionality, it will just be shut off throughout the whole entire share consortia, so they just will stop printing at that time. And maybe what I'll plan for is, um, I'll maybe speak with Cassandra about sending out a text with her share updates that day that when it's happening, so that everyone's not like, oh, my printer stopped working, or staff aren't aware of that, that that's shutting off. And we'll probably also try to put in that member connection and send out an email as well through the delivery, just in giving everyone the heads up, like we'll set a date. We're going to turn it off on this date specifically, um, but it will not be until all three hubs have their machines installed and they are fully operational.
I hope we're live by then. We're not quite live yet, so hopefully by then we will be.
Dina? Hi, good morning. Uh, I just wanted to let you know, um, real quick. And the turning off the transit labels will actually be a library-by-library function. I don't think we have the ability to do it system-wide. I will double-check. So yeah, you know, Esther and Matt Vernon, and if they're, they still need them on for some reason, they should be able to leave them on. I don't, I'll double-double check the, things, but I don't think it can be done at a system-wide level.
Okay.
Okay, and then someone had to step away and missed the, the, uh, part about rubber bands and the AMHS, so can you?
Okay, you surprised that.
So what we decided is that we are going to eliminate the use of rubber bands with the automated machine. Um, and then we did bring on Lynn Price in that section, just to kind of get her input on how it's been working for them, and if items have been broken. She reported that it's been very minimal, maybe five items a year max that have been broken. Um, she indicated they sort about two million, and we are sorting about three-point-five million, maybe plus. Uh, so not that many more, but about one-point-five million more, maybe. Um, so I anticipate the same, that we'll continue to plan to not use rubber bands. I did have a member library that came up with a really great idea that I liked. And I need to send the picture out, so you can visually see what I was meaning. I should have thought to include that. It was a couple of months ago and I completely forgot, but, um, basically what they just, what they came up with was like on a CD case, you could use that sticky transit label paper, and you could put a piece of paper around the section that would open on a CD case if you're worried about it opening during delivery transit. So, um, that would be another method that we could kind of secure and close an item instead of using a rubber band.
Thank you. We also have, well, items that meet delivery on the go require a transit receipt when placing them in the delivery route, or is the dog bag sufficient?
The dog bag will be sufficient, yes, and you'll still be able to see the delivery on the go. Whenever you're, it, it will just be a little bit different. You'll be used, you'll be having to look at the screen instead of that transit slip to determine if it's on the route, library or not. But we'll still offer that delivery on-the-go service, and we'll still continue to use those delivery-on-the-go bags. It will not require a slip.
And to clarify with the transit slips and like the turning off and turning on and the no longer using those, those are only for in-transit items, correct? Like if libraries need to print out slips internally for like patron holds, they, that will not be affected.
Correct, absolutely. So every library will still have their option. And even to jump back, every library will have the option to turn on transit slips if you really want to use them. The only downside is that it's at the library level, it's not at the, um, like items coming back to you. So it wouldn't work if, say, for an example, an item was going to Mount Vernon to Effingham, and Effingham wanted them turned on. When it leaves Mount Vernon, it's not going to print a transit slip. It's only going to print them at your library whenever you have that functionality turned on. But absolutely, patrons hold slips, all that kind of stuff will still work fine. You'll still have that ability to use that. It's just that when an item's getting ready to leave your library, instead of it popping up and saying yes, and then automatically printing that slip, the slip just won't print anymore, and you'll just be able to put it directly in the bin.
Hey, will you hand-sort OCLC items that are going through WorldShare?
Absolutely. So WorldShare, ILDS, if you're a standalone library, none of those will be able to be sorted through the automated machine. The, the only, um, platform that will be synchronizing with the sorting machine is the Share Polaris Consortium. So all of Share and Polaris, that's kind of how the sorting machine even works, is that it needs to be connected to Polaris to be able to identify where that's going. So basically, when an item comes through the machine, we'll send it through, it will scan either that RFID or that external barcode. And then it will reference the Polaris, um, platform to determine where that item's heading to, and then that's how it kind of routes which bin it goes to.
Hey, should we place a barcode on items that we are sending to the hub for express cataloging?
No, all express cataloging, CMC items, all of that stuff, we will not send through the sorting machine at all. Those could still be, um, set to the side like normal. We typically, right now, don't put them through, um, delivery bins. We set those aside for those staff to handle those items.
Uh, Colleen, may I pop in? Hi, everyone. Um, express cataloging, you do not send the items to us. That is strictly online only and only for certain materials. Regular cataloging will follow the same procedure that Colleen just said.
Thank you. Thanks, Jennifer.
Do OCLC items still need a transit slip since they will be hand-sorted?
Absolutely. So we'll still continue using those, um, IHLs provided labels for standalones or the ILDS labels, those will still be needed. So anything that is not for the share consortia from a share to a share member will still need a transit slip.
Okay, let me check the chat. That was all that came in through the Q and A. Do the transit receipt slips get stuck in the AMHS?
Oh, I think maybe they're meaning like, would it cause an issue with the AMHS? From my understanding, no, it's okay to have the transit slips. Um, we just thought it was going to be a big benefit for member libraries to be able to save on those transit slips, since the machine would be able to sort from a, on the barcode or RFID. So that's why we're, um, planning to remove that functionality.
But if a library chooses to, they can still use transit. Okay.
They sure can.
And I think those are all the questions that have come in that I've seen that have, I think we've answered. Not we, you and Tina and Jennifer have answered all of the questions that have come in. So if anybody else has any questions, please send them in.
Okay, we'll give it another minute maybe, but if not, thank you, everyone, for coming today. Um, as always, if you have questions, reach out to me about this process. I'm happy to help and answer. And, um, I'm trying to think of what the next steps might be for when we have our next meeting. It might be closer to, um, when we're getting ready to go live, maybe with the machines. Just so if member libraries are curious about that step, or if we have any other updates. Um, but at this time, I don't have another one planned unless there's something that I'm not thinking of right now. So please reach out to me if there's another topic you'd like to discuss, or, um, and even if we just want to hold a members meeting one day, discussing things, or how people, how the duplication project's going. Maybe reach out to me and we could set that up if you want to. Any other questions, Kate?
I'm not getting any other questions. I am getting a lot of thank yous.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Everyone have a great rest of the day, and we'll see you next time.